Good afternoon. Thank you so much for joining us. Before we begin today's formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council, the city's Assisted Housing Governing Board will convene. I will call to order the Assisted Housing Governing Board and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Board Member Decicio? Board Member Garcia?
Here.
Board Member Guardado?
Here.
Board Member Maggard?
Here.
Board Member O'Brien?
Here.
Board Member Pastor?
Here.
Board Member Stark?
Here.
Board Member Waring?
Here.
Vice Chair Ansari?
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego?
Here.
Item three is the meeting minutes. Board Member Maggard, do you have a motion?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Item number four is Resolution 217. Board Member Maggard, do you have a motion?
I motion to approve Resolution 217.
Second.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
Decicio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Maggard?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes ten zero.
We will adjourn the board. Thank you so much to Board Member Maggard for joining us. We appreciate your continued help. We'll next move towards the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We'll begin with an invocation and I'll turn to Police Chaplain Robert Fezmyer.
You're welcome and invited to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful and blessed day. We thank you for the refreshing rain and the sustaining snow. We thank you for each person gathered in this place. We also thank you with gratitude upon our hearts for the protection over all the events of these past two weeks, for your protection of our protectors, our first responders, and the exceptional job which they did to protect this city and state. We thank you for the financial blessings that will be provided to be used in making this city a better place to live and to work. Protect our leaders. Grant them wisdom. We ask that you grant them discernment and truth and the courageousness of integrity and character. Bless and guide the business and the decisions of this gathering. And we also ask that you bless the families of those represented in this room as we work together to serve you, for we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Decicio, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Chaplain Fezmyer and Councilman Decicio. We'll now call to order the meeting. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilman Decicio? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ansari?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Mario Barajas is with us to provide interpretation. Mario, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Hello, my name is Mario Barajas and I'll be serving as today's Spanish interpreter for our Spanish speakers. I'll now take a moment to introduce myself to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas y estaré sirviendo hoy como intérprete a los de habla hispana. Deseamos pedirles de antemano si es que van a dar un comentario público, por favor, hable despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada uno o dos oraciones para que podamos interpretarle lo que está diciendo de la manera más completa posible. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Well, City Clerk, please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances numbered G-7078, S-49401 through 49441, and Resolutions 22098 through 22100.
Thank you. I'll turn to our city attorney to explain the role of public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. Person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item One. Vice Mayor, boards and commissions.
Motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much to our citizens who provide this important role and advice to the city of Phoenix. We will now swear them in. Please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And then I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations, you are officially sworn in. If you could go behind, the council would like to personally congratulate you. Again, congratulations to our new commissioners. So many of us up here got our start on commissions, volunteering with the city, and it's incredibly important. The city council provides an advisory role to the state of Arizona on liquor license. We'll turn to that portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Items 2 through 11, noting that Item 11 was originally recommended for disapproval due to Finance Department recommendation for disapproval. However, since then, it has been revised and is now recommended for approval.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Decicio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Items 12 through 72, except the following: Items 13, 14, 40, 45, 57, and 71, noting that Item 46 is as corrected, Item 70 is to be continued to March 22, 2023. Item 71 is as revised and excluding these items for virtual public comment, Items 71 and 72. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Vice Mayor, there are no other items to exclude at this time. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Decicio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 13 is a payment ordinance item for the Maricopa County Community College District, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Decicio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item 14 is also payment ordinance, National Association of Housing and Redevelopment officials. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Decicio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven two.
Item 40 is a raise grant application. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve Item 40.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn to the Vice Mayor for comments.
Thank you. I'm very excited to support this grant application and work towards securing up to $5 million in federal dollars to design a Levine area conveyance channel action plan. The conveyance channel has been a hot topic in my district, especially this year with Levine residents asking for better active transportation and recreation infrastructure, lighting, and better safety measures. We've been raising this issue with Deputy City Manager Mario Panigua, and I just want to thank him for turning those concerns into action through this grant application, which will help fund the planning process to make the community's requests a reality. I look forward to being very involved in this process and making sure that the community's input is taken into account so that we can deliver a top-of-the-line final product. This 5.5-mile corridor could be a major destination for the Southwest Valley and for Levine families. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, or Vice Mayor Ansari and myself have spent a lot of time in this part of our districts. I'm really excited for this grant as well. The Levine Channel has functioned to help prevent flooding, and I agree that it could become a great amenity. So looking forward for, I'm sure, the community will be engaged, but looking forward to getting this grant and getting to work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. The city of Phoenix has been very successful with raise grants. We were awarded $25 million last year for the Rio Solado pedestrian and bicycle bridge, which will help us invest in our riverfront corridor and reimagine the riverfront. This is a slightly different grant in that it is a planning grant, so it will allow us to talk with the Levine community about top priorities and this type of investment. And it would not preclude the city from applying for a larger-scale discretionary raise grant this year to support land reuse in the area around Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. So this is a $5 million grant and requires a match of the city of up to $1.25 million. In October, we sold property at 67th Avenue to ADOT so that they could construct SR-30, and that was a $1.5 million sale. So I believe a condition or suggestion of that sale was the proceeds be used in District 7. So now we have this moving forward, and we asked our street department to come up with many initiatives to improve pedestrian safety and encourage active transportation. So there may be a good opportunity to leverage resources here so that we can go even further and take the 67th Avenue property and turn it into millions more. Very exciting investment. Levine has been developing around the canal, including some of the retail that we've been working so hard to bring, and movie theater, very beloved as well. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Decicio? Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 45 is next. Sale of unclaimed and forfeited firearms contract. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Item 45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and maybe a brief explanation of what this is.
Mayor, members of the council, Executive Assistant Chief Derek Elmore is coming to the table, and he will provide a very brief presentation regarding what this item entails.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Very briefly, the firearm disposal, and just to give you a brief history on what it is and what we have to do. If I can get the remote to work. Got to be smarter than the remote. Got it. Thank you. Disposal of firearms as required by us, by state law, means a disposal by transfer of the property to the actual owner, sell of that, conversion of those firearms, or destruction, or by any other means. The court has required, the courts are required to order a forfeiture on certain cases that involve felonies, and those court orders come to us and require us to dispose of those firearms. If the transfer, the sale of the firearm must be sold to a federal licensed firearm dealer, which is Sierra Auctions, which is who we have contracted with to dispose of some of our firearms. The only ones that we are talking about are the ones that are court ordered, and those are the ones that are in question. Sierra Auctions will sell the firearms to the public, and then in return, a percentage of those proceeds will be given back to the City of Phoenix General Fund. For the contract to Sierra Auctions, the contract language limits the sale and transfer of the firearms to only those items that we are court ordered to forfeit, for forfeiture, for the sale by state law. So the only ones that we're looking at are the ones that the court is telling us we must sell by court order. Sierra Auctions is a federal firearms licensee and is required to follow the federal standards for resale, including background checks on those items as well. Firearms that are prohibited by state or federal law, those will not be transferred to Sierra. Those are automatically part of our destruction, and those are the ones that are allowed to be destroyed by us. So those will not be a part of that. As of right now, all the firearms that we have currently in storage is over 42,000 firearms. Of those, a little over 3,200 are ready to be transferred. Of that, the court-ordered portion is just slightly over 1,400 items. So the items that we're talking about here today are those 1,400.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments? We'll go to Councilman Waring and then the Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. The state sets firearm statutes, so we're basically just following state law, and we really don't have a choice, right?
Councilman, Mayor and Councilman Waring, you're correct. We don't have a choice. Those are court-ordered. It's telling us that we must sell these firearms.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I guess I would just like to start by saying today that my vote today is with the understanding that this item will pass and therefore the city will be in compliance with state law. I will be voting no personally because I am very firmly against the notion of reselling weapons that have been confiscated or forfeited and in some cases have resulted in violent crime in our communities. I don't think Phoenix should be forced into the business of selling weapons, and in the past, we have been able to melt them down and use them for public art, like the large Release the Fear sculpture at Roosevelt and Central. But as we know, and as you mentioned, Chief, that state law makes that impossible today. So I want to take this moment to call on state leadership to remove the statutes such as 1487 that prevent cities from making our own critical public safety decisions. There were 648 mass shootings recorded in the United States in 2022. There have been 67 so far in 2023, including one just a couple days ago that made national headlines. And in Phoenix last year, we had a record of gun violence in our city. When we announced Operation Gun Crime Crackdown last summer, Phoenix put out a statement that we were seeing 45% more gun homicides at the same point in 2021. So again, I am willing to work with whoever that I can, whether it's federal, state, local level, to provide more options for cities and towns to choose from. We're the ones closest to the communities that actually suffer from gun violence and have a duty to create a safer city. So I strongly believe selling them is a mistake, and we are being forced to make that decision, and hopefully soon, one day, we will have an actual choice in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Pastor, followed by Councilmember Garcia. We'll go to Councilmember Garcia. Did you also want? Okay. We'll go to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar, doesn't feel right for us to be selling back these guns that were used in crimes. We're seeing violence epidemic across the country, obviously in my community, South Phoenix, with the tragedy that happened recently in Michigan State this week. I too would like to call on state ledge to take this up and look into changing the gun sellback system. Also, you know, whether it's the state forcing us or anyone else forcing us, it's still up to us to make the best decision possible for us and our constituents. And so there is such a thing as being forced to or other jurisdictions not being right. And so I too will be opposing this measure.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I have a question, and I don't know where that slide is. I don't have the slides in front of me to ask. We can bring it back up. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I understand that there's a state law and that courts are required to order forfeiture and sale firearms. When we transfer the, when the firearms are transferred to Sierra Auction, who are they sold to?
They're normally sold at auction, but they are required to follow federal laws as they sell those guns back.
So who does the auctioneer or the auction house sell the guns to?
I believe that is a public auction.
Okay. So it's a public auction, so the public, anybody in the public can go and bid on confiscated firearms. Am I correct?
So I believe that's, anyone that qualifies to purchase a firearm can, yes.
Okay. And I believe there's many incidences that we have in the past of government doing this and those guns and landing in others' hands that then are used against us. And I just don't want to name those several incidents, but I think there's some examples of that. And I understand that it's state law, but there's a point in time where as electors, we have to say, this is an inappropriate law. And in the sense, we're being forced to do this. And that's my understanding, because it's state law. That's a yes, right?
Sorry, Councilwoman Pastor, Mayor. Yeah, I don't, I just enforce the laws. I don't, I don't make them, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And I did have an opportunity to talk with Representative Longden, who has a bill, House Bill 2191, which would give the city the ability to make more decisions. Although in this case, these are really a court that has given us a directive. I think it's important, as a body that makes ordinances, to follow laws and follow court orders, even when we do not disagree with them. Even when we disagree with them, which in this case, we want safer communities with less gun violence, but it's important to follow our courts. So I will be voting yes. Roll call.
Decicio?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Guardado?
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
Yes, I'm going to be voting no because I also agree that the city should not be in the business of selling guns into our community. And I just think that there has to be a different way of doing this and also calling on to the state to help us figure out how is it that we don't continue to do this and be obligated to make decisions that we know are not right, especially for certain parts for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
No.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
No.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes five four.
Next, we go to Item 57, Maryville Parkway Terrace remodel. I'll turn to Councilwoman Guardado for a motion and comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion for Item 57.
Second.
Thank you. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Titus Matthew and his team in the Housing Department for working hard to bring this item forward. My team attended one of the meetings with residents of Maryville Parkway Terrace and know how excited they are, they are to have an updated and modern units that provide additional community spaces and better accessibility. It is essential that we continue to provide our seniors with a safe and affordable housing options, and I am very excited to be able to support this item.
Roll call.
Decicio? Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Now we move to the planning and zoning portion of our agenda. We'll begin with Item 71, which is in Council District 4, the northeast corner of 7th Avenue and Camelback Road. We will begin with a staff report and welcome our Deputy City Manager, Ellen Stevenson, and our Planning Director, Joshua Nerk.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Item 71 is a request to rezone a 7.49-acre site in Council District 4 and the Uptown TOD area from CTU TOD 1 to W code T55 TOD area from C2 TOD1 to Woo Code, T55, to allow multifamily residential. Bring the project, the slideshow up here in a sec. The proposal calls for 249 dwelling units in a four-story building. Thank you so much, Yusef. The aerial here on the screen highlights the projects, it did highlight the project's location just north of Camelback Road on the east side of 7th Avenue. Here's a snapshot of the site plan, as I mentioned, 249 dwelling units and a four-story building. These are the renderings of the project, and the perspective is from 7th Avenue. The Hamba Village Planning Committee recommended approval with an additional stipulation by a 12 to 4 vote. The Planning Commission recommended approval per the VPC by an 8 to 0 vote. Staff recommends approval per the February 13th memo from the Planning and Development Director and adoption of the related ordinance. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Pastor, any questions?
I would like those that want to speak to speak, and then I have a piece that I want to say. Thank you.
Perfect. Then we will go ahead and open the hearing. Each side will have 10 minutes, although you do not need to use all 10 minutes. The applicant can reserve time if needed, but again, does not need to. And the appellant can use all time for the first speaker or divvy it up as he or she sees fit for their 10 minutes. So we'll begin with the applicant. Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. For your record, my name is Brian Greathouse. My address is 1850 North Central Avenue. Here on behalf of Magnolia Property Company, who is the proposed developer of the site. I want to start out by thanking Josh for his presentation. Showed some pretty pictures up there. I'll try to skip through some of my pretty pictures. But we did the same analysis as Planning Staff did, and we found that this proposal is extremely, extremely consistent with the Reinvent Phoenix and the Uptown TOD policy plans. So therefore, we agree with all of Staff's findings in the report. We appreciate Staff's recommendation of approval, the Village's recommendation of approval, and the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation of approval. And we accept stipulations 1 through 5, including the revision to stipulation number 15 as provided in the memo that was distributed. This is a classic underutilized infill redevelopment opportunity on a five-acre site where there were rundown buildings that were obsolete, operating with commercial businesses. Most of those buildings have been demolished today. They were demolished because I received a call from the President of the Medlock Historic Neighborhood Association telling me that there were criminal trespassers in there, and there was some drug activity and things were being stolen from the community. I called my client, who called the property owner and had those buildings torn down. I understand one of them had caught on fire from some cooking of methamphetamines. And so they've been demolished, and this is a great redevelopment opportunity to clean up a site that's had some challenges over the years. If you look around the area, there's a large commercial shopping center across the street to the west. That's the Camelback Village Square. If you look in the TOD policy plan, there's four pages dedicated to a vision of that area being redeveloped with a mixed-use concept. This is a residential development, but there's also two commercial buildings on the south side that front directly onto Camelback Road. Those are not being rezoned today. Those are going to remain C2, and they are commercial opportunities. So this site is a multifamily development. The site to the east of us is compatible, because they're also a multifamily development. And then east of there is a hotel and several restaurants that Vintage Partners developed. As you saw from Josh's slide, it's a C-shaped building. There's two driveways to access the site. One is on the north, one is on the south. If you look at the TOD policy plan vision for the area, the similarities are uncanny. You look at, that's an L-shaped building. We're proposing a C-shaped building. These are the elevations Josh showed a moment ago, and the total investment money being invested here is upwards of $70 million on this redevelopment site. We've done a significant amount of outreach on this project. It started with discussing the proposed development with city leadership back in the fall of 2021. We were asked to reach out to the Medlock Historic Neighborhood Association. We did that in January 2022. After many emails and phone calls, we had a meeting with their Transportation Committee Chair at my office, where we talked about some concerns that the neighborhood had. Then we submitted a pre-application to the city in March 2022, and we emailed potential traffic mitigation design options, and we submitted, or we emailed our draft traffic study to the Transportation Committee Chair so that they can begin evaluating the development. Thereafter, we submitted the rezoning application. We were asked by Medlock to meet with the Streets Transportation Department. We did that. We talked about mitigation options. We talked about the city's ongoing capital improvement project on Colter, the funding for that, how we can contribute to help that. And we learned a lot from those discussions with Streets Transportation Department. Then we went back to Medlock, and we had the same conversations of what we can do and what we can't do. And they asked us to continue evaluating particularly how many folks could turn left out of our development. And we did that through something called a gap analysis. Thereafter, we held a neighborhood meeting, and we finally had a final sit-down in November of last year to come to an agreement on a $25,000 mitigation fee that would be deposited into the Streets Transportation escrow account to be used towards future improvements. And I have a quick slide here on the traffic study conclusions, because this is extremely When you compare the previous 47,000 square feet of commercial buildings that were on the site to the proposed development, the proposed development is anticipated to generate 63% fewer weekday trips. So just by the fact of it being a less intense use of commercial use, it's going to generate less traffic. There's nothing on the site today, so it will generate more traffic than exists today, but it has existing zoning in place, and that's C2. And if you look at the entire use list of C2, this proposed development would generate 49% fewer weekday trips. So it's less traffic from this development than exists in the zoning today. We also did a left-turn gap analysis, and the findings were rather surprising. Our multifamily development is anticipated to have 30 left turns out of it in the AM and the PM peak hour. And if you assess how many gaps there were in traffic during that peak hour, there were 87 gaps in the AM peak hour, and that could accommodate 142 vehicles, because some of those gaps were one vehicle, some were two, some were three vehicles. So there is an opportunity to turn left. In the PM, there were 61 gaps with a potential to accommodate 82 vehicles. So there is an opportunity to turn left, and the concern you're going to hear today is people who can't turn left and decide to turn right and go down Colter Street, Georgia, and Oregon. We believe most of the people can turn left. We don't know how everyone operates with their human behavior when they're driving, so some folks might think it makes more sense to drive a mile and a half around to get to the same point that might be able to go straight to on 7th Avenue. But the opportunity is there, and all you have to do is wait about 20 seconds to turn left. We're also implementing a bike program in this development, so residents can rent out bikes, bike down to the restaurants on Central Avenue. Hopefully, the shopping center gets redeveloped across the street, and the whole area just begins to generate activity and investment dollars. Finally, we request City Council's approval, consistent with the policy plans in the area and the recommendations from staff, Village, and Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now hear from Ken Waters.
Hello, I'm Ken Waters. I'm the appellate plaintiff on this. This is why it's before the City Council, because I challenge this. Had long conversation with Josh, had some conversation with Brian, respected everybody. I was here two and a half months ago. Is this loud enough? I was here two and a half months ago at December 7th, where I also appealed the OmniNet. They were going to switch back to single use. I said, you got to be kidding me. So they went for an extension. We found a point of leverage. I said, okay, let's fight this. And thank God, Laura Pastor stepped up and saved the day. She said, no, we're going to stipulate you keep the mixed-use component. They were going to quietly, stealthily just switch to single use. And when I found out that they were going to switch back to single use, it just, like, what's going on on the Central Avenue on our Main Street USA corridor? So I just took a drive down Central Avenue, and we're just inventorying the drip by drip by drip, single-use apartment projects on our Main Street USA, on our Central Avenue. It deserves mixed use. So I started going down this rabbit hole of TOD and light rail and watching all these urban planner on YouTube. I was familiar with it to begin with, because I was there at the very first when OmniNet came into being in 2015, and they came out of the gate with a mixed-use project. Well done. And then the Muse down at McDowell, they too did a mixed-use. Well done, City of Phoenix. And then things started to go awry. And let me back up a little bit, because if I was here December 7th, I made the charge, the City of Phoenix is ruining the light rail TOD. I overstated the case, because I only inventoried Midtown and Uptown, and now it's going out Camelback. And really, from Central to Osborne, it was just like nine single-use, non-mixed-use projects. And just, this is ridiculous. And now it's going out Camelback, and from Camelback to 7th Avenue is a half-mile. So really, my comments are in a two-mile range, one and a half mile from Osborne to Central and from Central over to 7th Avenue. This project is on the TOD, is across the street from a light rail station. And TOD, we got to start thinking that TOD is really the walkable urban lifestyle goal, to get people out of their cars, to not, you know, drive around and to get on the rail, or not even get on the rail, just start walking around. The dwellers and the riders, we're building a system, and this is two-mile stretch. Let me keep it at that, okay? Because downtown's dynamic and things are going on elsewhere. But, I mean, the legacy that's happening for the, Ed Pastor put the system, he funded this from Congress, thank God, the great, our great Congressman and Laura's father. Bless him. And I wasn't for it at first, but now we got it. And it's, you know, we got to make the best of it. And what I'm seeing in the section where the city is signing off, and these projects are getting staff recommendations, how they get staff recommendations is beyond me. Because what we're creating is a system where, where's there to go? There's no place to go here. I went to the section where, down by FedEx Office and Shipping Supply, right down there south of Indian School, the FedEx Building, and then there's the Bosa Donuts. So three projects in there. Centra, Midtown, Park on Central, and Aura Central. Three projects. Those are three missed opportunities. I walked it, I was the only one on sidewalks. No one was coming out of the apartments. If those were mixed use on our Central Avenue retail and commercial corridor, they may have been vacant for a couple of years. So be it. Tapestry on Central took a while to fill up, but they are now filled up. These buildings are going to be there 100 years. We want a dynamic, vibrant Central Avenue, our Main Street USA corridors. And by doing these projects, drip by drip of just single-use apartments, we're killing our Main Street USA corridor. And now we're going to start doing it with Central, no, from Camelback corridor as well. That's a 1.5-mile corridor from Central to 19th, 1.5 miles. It's also 1.5 miles from Central down to Osborne. Now, if we can't make, excuse me. If we can't make mixed use work at the northeast corner of 7th Avenue and Camelback, the northeast corner of 7th Avenue and Camelback, across the street from a light rail station, and if we can't make it, the logic work to put a mixed use there, where else are you going to do it on the Camelback corridor? Because this is the best case to make it mixed use. And then down the corner, my God, it's southwest corner of Central and Camelback, the very heart and soul of Uptown. Southwest corner of Central and Camelback, they too were going to promise about 20,000 square feet, I heard, reportedly, allegedly, mixed use. That was going to be the prize plum of Midtown and Uptown as far as projects goes. They too have now scaled back to, we're not going to do mixed use. It's just going to be apartments. Excuse me, at the southwest corner of Central and Camelback? My God. OmniNet tried it, but thank God Laura Pastor stepped up, and she saved the day and stipulated, no, you're going to stay with the mixed use. If the logic works there, it certainly works at southwest corner of Central and Camelback, and it works at the corner of northeast corner of 7th Avenue and, 7th Avenue and Camelback. You've got a win streak going right now, Councilwoman Pastor, of one right now, and saving the day on OmniNet. I'd like to see you save the day on this project. I heard you've been working on it for four years, but it's not contributing to the TOD. I mean, what you were doing for four years, bringing this along, I don't know. It's not worthy of being on the TOD. They should be like, you know, a quarter mile off the TOD. We need all hands on deck on the TOD. I listened to a video this morning where Las Vegas was bragging about what's going on in Phoenix, and they said there's been $7 billion worth of developments along the TOD. This is a big-time subject here. I don't know where those figures come from, but if there's been $7 billion worth of development along the TOD, that's 7 billion with a B. This is a big, big deal for the City of Phoenix. Right now, developments are handled by the District Council person, because the elephant in the room is, don't mess with my district and I won't mess in yours. So Laura Pastor is our god and goddess on this item here. It just happens to be. So I'm pleading with you, continue your win streak, what you did with OmniNet, and say, hey, let's maybe rethink this and add some mixed use, because then down the road, the betting store on the corner, something will happen there. That will be turned into, hopefully, mixed use as well. And then get all hands on deck and see if you can do a soft core persuasion job on the southwest corner of Central and Camelback, because that should not be going apartments only. That should be a prize gem. And then just keep your win streaks going, Councilwoman Pastor, of mixed use after mixed use, because these single-use housing projects on our, on our Main Street USA corridors have got to stop. And I put Camelback right up there with, right behind Central Avenue. I would say Central Avenue is Phoenix's primary Main Street USA corridor, and Camelback goes down through Uptown, through Biltmore, through Esplanade, through the Camelback area, through Arcadia, out to the Scottsdale Fashion Square. So I would say Camelback is one of, you know, right behind Central Avenue as far as being another prime commercial retail corridor. It's a TOD. So I just, I just woke up, I just had an epiphany, like, we are ruining this TOD. I mean, I should have been in the fight a long time ago, but the cost of getting involved in all these projects and basically getting the crap beat out of you at the Village Planning Committees and the Planning Commissions, most people don't appeal to the City Council. They just leave it at that. I guess I got a high threshold for pain. But we really need to wake up and take this TOD seriously, because, let me circle back, TOD is all about building the walkable urban lifestyle. And you either do it on a rich basis, or it's not going to work. If you do it sporadically, a mixed-use project here, a mixed-use project there, you know, it's going to be unsuccessful. We've had so many missed opportunities with all these single use. I mean, between Indian School and Camelback, it's basic, it's almost been ruined with all these single-use projects. I mean, there's like eight projects between Indian School and Camelback that are just, you know, not contributing to the TOD. They're not contributing to Central Avenue, not contributing to our Main Street USA. So that's why I brought this project up. I don't really have any micro criticisms of the project itself, but these single-use projects are killing us. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. We will now go to comments from others who have signed up to speak. We'll begin with Ellen Bilbrey, followed by Jason Morris.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak on this issue. My name is Ellen Bilbrey, and I live at 215 West Georgia, within the Medlock Place neighborhood, the beautiful Medlock Place neighborhood, by the way, if you've been down to, in that area, to some of our restaurants. I'm here to support the Magnolia Project, which has proposed an apartment project along 7th Avenue. Two years ago, we learned criminals were living in the buildings behind that old shopping center and burglarizing within Medlock, and we got pictures of the things that they stole in that shopping center. They were taking out all the copper as well. So with the help So with the help of the police, the city, and the owners, and now I just found out, Brian, we were able to get that all demolished and I begged for demo permits a lot and the city really helped. You might know that we got, one of the biggest fires in central Phoenix happened in that shopping center because of the people living in those back buildings. And so it almost ignited the big Broadstone project, which is, was half-built along Camelback. And so, thank God, the police, the fire, were able to protect that one from burning down as well. So last fall, the Magnolia group was interested in buying the land and after a group meeting, we saw that was only four stories instead of six as allowed in that TOD. That's a high-density TOD. That is not like our historic district, which is very low at Central. So, and that the zoning cap is 56 feet, but they only wanted for stories on that. And they wanted to build front stoops, setbacks in trees. Am I done already? Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. We're just asking for traffic mitigation, just to let you know, that's what we're here for. We need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice is next, followed by Lucy.
Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. For the record, this is George Pasquale at Witty Morris, filling in for Jason Morris, who's a little under the weather today. Thank you for the time. We represent the immediately adjacent property owner to the east, Alliance Residential, who's currently under development on their site there, had some initial concerns with the project layout, in particular, the north property line and how it interfaced with a drive aisle access easement on our property. Reached out to Magnolia, they've been incredibly responsive and great to work with, and the updated stipulation 15 in your updated staff report reflects the efforts to date. And with those changes, we are now fully supportive of this application and really look forward to it coming to fruition. I think that the changes between Alliance's project and this project, you know, over the next two years, this corner, when these both come to fruition, is really going to be very positive. And we worked with Ellen back in the day and she's, she's correct, you know, it's really getting the seediness out of here and really going to be a great corner again, that can really be an asset to the neighborhood and the great adjacent historic neighborhood. So thank you for the time, we are fully supportive of this project.
And Janice will be next.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lucy Willis, I'm a resident of Medlock Place Historic, my address is 547 West Oregon Avenue, I live on the corner of 7th Avenue in Oregon. We've heard Mr. Greathouse tell us that this project adheres to the guidelines of the urban walkability in the TOD, another attempt to shoehorn a multi-story apartment complex into a small parcel with limited egress and egress, all on 7th Avenue and no mixed-use. He is a paid spokesman for the developer who, if they achieve their zoning, will either build or sell to someone who will build it. Mr. Greathouse gets his fee, developer makes money, and they both go on their way, done their job. You as council members have asked the citizens of Phoenix to elect you to make the decisions about the future of Phoenix, another job, and if something goes wrong with those decisions, oh well, just a job, done it and moving on. In this instance, please don't make the small historic neighborhood Medlock Place the collateral damage to advance some dystopian dream to support the light rail and urban walkability, but in reality, making it already extremely dangerous intersection worse, creating already overused 7th Avenue into an untenable traffic jam situation and funneling more cut-through traffic into the neighborhood. But okay, wait, the developers Alliance at the Broadstone and now Magnolia have pledged to contribute $25,000 to explore traffic mitigation, but never a definite comprehensive plan, just promises of studies. The board of three of Medlock Place quickly signed on to promote the project without informing neighbors, pay to play. I have a petition I'd like to give to Laura Pastor with 70 signatures from the citizens of the neighbors in Medlock Place that are opposed to this. Thank you.
Janice Paul, I believe will be our final speaker, but we'll confirm with staff.
Hello, my name is Janice Paul. I live at 539 West Oregon Avenue and I am opposed to the zoning change. I would like to say off the bat that our neighborhood association did not inform many of the neighbors regarding this big project, and we had just found out about it when the sign was posted. Our major issue is traffic. I've lived here for 18-plus years and I know through daily experience that turning left onto 7th Avenue is very dangerous and it certainly takes longer than 20 seconds the majority of the time. We fear that those people in the Magnolia apartments will become frustrated with the traffic and end up turning right and making another right to cut through our neighborhood. I know the traffic studies that the lawyer was speaking of, but I'd like to also say that data can be manipulated. We have no sidewalks in our neighborhood, basically, and that means that anyone out walking, including the numerous children in our neighborhood, are walking in the street. If cars are parked against the curb, then people are forced further into the streets. Okay, there's no traffic mitigation plan for our neighborhood with the exception of Coulter with their two roundabouts for the bike path. And the cut-through traffic will be a very big danger to the children and the people out walking. This also includes the high school students at Valley Lutheran High School, those walking to and from school. Just probably two weeks ago, a child was hit in the crosswalk of 7th Avenue and Coulter on her way to school. The added increase in traffic in this area is just too dangerous. And I ask you to consider when making this decision, that what you decide will have an impact on the Medlock residents for years.
Thank you for that testimony and just confirming with our team, we have gotten all the speakers. All right, we will close the public hearing. I have a question for our planning director. There is legislation, Senate Bill 1117 at the state legislature, and while Mr. Waters was testifying about how cities need to be more active to create transitory development, et cetera, it was just making me think, what would be the impact on our process if that bill were to pass?
Mayor, members of the council, as an example, one potential impact, if you focus on this, on this project as an example, as the bill is currently worded, a project like this would be allowed by rights without an opportunity to address things like traffic design and the enhanced streetscape in collaboration with the community.
Thank you so much. I just think it's important to understand, Councilwoman Pastor has been working a long time to address issues, including traffic, streetscape, impacts on neighborhoods and...
Mayor?
Oh, Councilwoman Stark.
Yes, I've had an opportunity to review Senate Bill 1117 and I'm going to commend Councilwoman Pastor for the work she did with the neighborhood, and she was allowed to do that work with the neighborhood. If Senate Bill 1117 went through, because they already have commercial zoning, my understanding is they could build a multifamily with a limit, a limit of the height at 85 feet. It would have to be 85 feet or greater within two miles of a light rail stop. Am I correct about that, Josh?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that's my understanding of the bill as well.
Yes, so that kind of takes us out of the process. It takes the councilperson who represents the district out of the process, who probably knows that area and that neighborhood much better than a bill, a statewide bill, because I think, I can't speak for the councilwoman, but I'm going to guess, she spent many months on this project to make it work for the community. And it takes a lot of time and effort to make sure we're doing the right thing so that we can all coexist. So she is allowing for additional multifamily, but also trying to look out for the existing neighborhoods. So I want to thank the councilwoman for what she's done and hopefully we can alert more of our residents about Senate Bill 1117. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeCiccio.
The other part of it too, just following what Councilwoman Stark was talking about, I just want to commend Councilwoman Pastor for doing this too. I mean, of the people up here, we're all, you know, pretty much alphas to a large degree, but Laura knows how to way to, to get things done and to protect neighborhoods. I mean, she's been very proficient at that. It looks like she's done a ton of work on this thing because this thing has changed so many times and it's never 100% where people are going to like it, you know what I mean, or love it or hate it. It's just one of those situations where you get into a spot where you've just got to hold certain things firm, and it looks like she did an excellent job on this, so I want to commend her on the work that you've done on this thing, Laura. I mean, it's apparent that you've done a tremendous amount of work, you've taken into consideration of the neighbors in there, and congratulations on that for the work that you put into it.
Thank you. We'll turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
So I want to thank the neighbors that have spoken, and what I want to do is bring up the slides because I'm going to demonstrate how I got to the decision-making that I did. So if you look right here, from the I-17 to the 51, all those, everything in red is commercial. So if you look at Camelback, all of that area is red, and where the little black box is, is the project that we are discussing. And one of the things that I've learned with a lot of the work on Camelback is through Re:Invent, because Re:Invent was a part of the community and the community participated in Re:Invent. And then two years ago, I did the Urban Land Institute project, which will be, we will be unveiling in April. And in there, it also demonstrated we need people in order to support the commercial on Camelback. Once again, all the red is commercial. Across the way from that project, we have a Fry's, a Starbucks, a Jump Place, and that area is also going to get revitalized. And there might be the possibility on one of the pads of residence, of a multifamily within that scope and area. So what I'm saying is, as a resident of that area pretty much all her life, understanding the nuances of historic neighborhoods and understanding also the transition that we are going through in the growth, I also am a strong advocate of protecting neighborhoods. And protecting neighborhoods in the sense of the dynamics of the traffic, which I hear and understand, and be able then to, how do we incorporate single-family residential also along Camelback, which is, those are our historic neighborhoods, but really, how do we incorporate multifamily? And this was the ideal space to really put that there because it's close to the TOD and the transportation area and can get people to and from work on Camelback. So as you see this slide, that's, as the yellow, the yellow represents all the residential. Once again, you see the little black box right there. And remember, Camelback is, is commercial. If you look at this slide, you see a purple, and then you see a really dark purple. Where the star is, that requires more, that requires more than two, height of two, which requires multifamily. This is in the Re:Invent, this is the land use, this is what everybody agreed to. So this project that's here in front of us is actually following what the community designed. And so I want to go right here, because we talk about the walkable urban, the Woo Code. And Ken talked about a slow drip. Well, it may look like a slow drip right now because different parts of the areas on light rail is being built out and following the Re:Invent. And we are trying and we're doing and implementing the Woo Code. And if anybody has watched me in some of the zoning throughout 7th Street and 7th Avenue, Councilwoman DeCiccio, will understand that I want a larger piece of the Woo Code on the 7th to make it walkable. If you look at this project, that's what it's going to do. It's the beginning of the Woo Code on 7th Avenue above Camelback. It's also building a shade canopy, which we are advocating for. And so the project in itself is a really good project. Now, I understand that several neighbors in, in Medlock didn't get the notice of this project. And so what I am going to ask Josh is, how far do they need to get noticed?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, right now our zoning requirements require a notice to all registered neighborhood associations within one mile and all property owners within 600 feet.
So all property owners within 600 feet of the project. So some neighbors did not get noticed because they were not within that area or zone. And so understanding the holistic piece of the effects that will happen, I also have Keeney Knudsen, our Streets Director, who I have been working with four years on Third, on Connectivity on Third, but we've also have a big project going on Coulter, so could you please explain that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor is a member of the council. The current project we have going on is a Coulter Street project between 15th Avenue and 20th Street, and it's a bike and pedestrian project, so there's going to be bringing, you know, our active transportation focus of the council of the city towards having an east-west important corridor there, and that project is actually in the process of design right now.
So as you, as he stated, there's the bike and pedestrian project that will be happening on Coulter from 15th Avenue all the way. And Councilwoman DeCiccio had a project across District Four, which we all, I got involved because some of my constituents asked me to get involved, and we got involved and we really built a good piece on that. What came out of that was the Coulter, Coulter from 15th Avenue and the bike and pedestrian walkability. So there are good things happening within our city, there are great projects happening. One of the pieces that Ken spoke about, spoke about was activation. On this project, the activation, the activation is really having the stoops on 7th Avenue, and that's one of the pieces that I had trouble with due to the fact that, for me, was safety. And so this project also puts a buffer in front of the area, the stoops and shade, where it is activated. And I understand that we want activation on the bottom, but I believe in this project, commercial is all the way around. but I believe in this project, commercial is all the way around this piece. And so I am going to give the motion, and that I wanted to explain to my colleagues and to everyone, what happened and how it came about holistically for me. I don't work in a silo fashion. I work in a, looking at the bigger picture and then moving into what that project looks like. What I do have a question, Keeney, is can we do a traffic study around there? Once it's built?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of council, actually, is one of the stipulations that our department would have for this development is to do a traffic impact study around, that's going to be a requirement as part of the development, to determine those exact impacts.
Okay. And then the other piece is, can we look at a HAWK also? Because I'm thinking about the pedestrian and the bike, but that's a bigger picture.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of council, as part of the Colter Street project, we anticipate a number of different creative solutions we'll be looking at to be able to get people safely across Colter Street, across the major cross-section, cross-streets, whether it be 7th Street, 7th Avenue, Central Avenue. And so those are all part of the project to be looking at those.
Okay. And can you speak about Third from Camelback?
And Third Avenue as well is a project, because the Third Avenue is, as many people may know, has for decades has been part of the Sonoran Bike Way corridor. And we've been working over a number of years now, as Councilwoman Pastor noted, to be able to improve and provide better active transportation facilities along there. We're getting ready to start construction between McDowell, I'm sorry, from McDowell all the way to Thomas. And also, we have plans going all the way up to Missouri as well.
Thank you. So I recommend, or I'm making the motion of approval per the February 13th memo from the Planning and Development Director and adoption of the related ordinance.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for your work on this. And again, I think it is important to remember if Senate Bill 1117 passed, these abilities to work on traffic issues would be greatly compromised. Any additional, Councilman DeCiccio?
At one point regarding the project on Colter, she was right on that. We did make some changes to it. She came to me and said, hey, here's why we want to do this. And she remembers. She's got a long memory. But that is true, and I want to commend her for that, because she made the project better in my district, too, which we weren't doing at the time. And she came and explained to me exactly why she wanted to do that. So she's been extremely consistent when it comes to these types of projects. So the project you're seeing now is very similar to the one that she, you know, helped me with in my district. So Laura, you were right. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Roll call.
DeCiccio? Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. That concludes our planning portion of the agenda. We have approved 249 housing units today. We next go to item 72, which is consideration of a citizen petition. We do have two members of the public to comment. We will begin with Michael Rogers, followed by Sky Spraker.
Yes, this is Michael Rogers. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, Michael Rogers. I live at 3612 East Palm Lane and have since 1988. And I'm aware of the cause for this petition, as it has received quite a bit of coverage in the news and on social media. Mayor and council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll be brief. I think it's fair to note that as for the alleged misuse of this resource intended for community building and underprivileged kids by council members, Garcia, Pastor, Ansari, and Guardado, I think the words of the iconic Sage Gomer Pyle come to mind. Shame, shame, shame. That being said, it seems unwise to remove this resource from the use of other council members who have not abused the privilege. I would favor a censure of the four who may have misused the suite and perhaps suspension of the privilege for them, but not a blanket cancellation for the entire council. My wife and I raised two boys who are now well on their own in their 20s. They're both doing extremely well. When one of them misbehaved, we brought consequences. We didn't punish both of them if only one of them misbehaved. I think it makes good common sense from a parenting standpoint and from a governing standpoint to hold people accountable, but not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I thank you very much.
Our final speaker will be Sky.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome, thank you so much. Hi, my name's Sky Spraker. I'm in favor of a ban on the use of the C-Sky Box suite. I don't think council members should be able to attend Suns games or cancer concerts on our dime, and that's just period. They're the highest paid city council members in the state, right? I'm a Suns fan, too. And it's not right for the city council to have access to a suite that no one else in the city has access to. Not only that, Councilman Garcia, as we've talked about, have used it to go to events with the organizations that have illegal contributions to his campaign. What is it about being a city council member that is giving you the right to Sky Box tickets? Just because you're an elected official? Why do you get to go to a Suns finals games for free and none of us do? That's my question. I'm done speaking, thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes our testimony on item 72.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve Option A, which would disallow city council from using the suite. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Waring?
Actually, I'm not seconding it. I'm just waiting to see if somebody seconds it, and I've got a comment. Okay, I will second it if nobody else is going to.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and now recognizing Councilman Waring.
Yes, I actually wanted to take this a different course. Most of us, as I looked down this row, weren't here when we had the vote about building the stadium in the first place. Some of us had strongly held views about building a stadium. The ownership group that we were working with is now much richer, because we did that, because they've now stole the stadium. That's like the main takeaway, I think, of all this, is that, nothing against him, but, you know, we made Robert Sarver a lot of money by making that vote. That was really the one definitive thing that happened by building that stadium. But it happened, it's there. You know, banning the box or whatever, I'm sort of sitting here bemused. We build the stadium and they decide to give us a box? That seems odd to me. We front the money and you decide what to give us? Shouldn't it be the other way around? We take what we want to decide what's left for you? There's a new owner now. The stadium, this team went for supposedly $4 billion. I wish him all the success in the world. My question is, can we sell the stadium to him? Do we have to have a basketball stadium? Is there some rule that says we have to? And if not, I guess, why not? Because some teams do own their own stadiums. And obviously, the value of this team has increased, I think it's 10 times, since Robert Sarver bought it in 2004. So in less than 20 years, it went up 10 times.
And I am not sure, I'll turn to our city attorney. Are we agendized to have that conversation?
Mayor, we are not.
Okay, that was.
Okay, well, I mean, we're talking about the stadium, so I'm not going to quibble, but, you know, I don't know if we're going to, so what are we going to do with the box? I mean, what do we do with it now? It sounds like it sits empty a lot of the time, which doesn't make a lot of sense either.
Was that a question for staff?
Yeah, the statistics I saw in the paper, I think it was 45% of the time or something, it sits empty.
Mayor, members of the council, Chris Mackey, Economic Development Director, and Deputy City Manager Ginger Spencer coming to the table to address that question. As you know, the box is currently used for economic development purposes. And Chris has several instances where that box has been utilized to benefit the community at large. So I'll turn it over to Chris and Ginger.
Thank you, City Manager Jeff Barton. Mayor and council, item 72, which is before you, is a citizen petition that was submitted by Mr. Andy Diaz, Nunez Diaz. And what it is, is in regards to the use of the city-owned arena suite. The policy that we have in the city that governs the use of the arena suite is a department policy through the Community and Economic Development Department. They administer the policy. The policy includes six areas that were approved by city council for use, which basically revolve around economic development and youth-related activities. The use of the policy, we have department host, and that includes city staff as well as elected officials. That is allowed in the policy. It also has tickets. It governs documentation that we need to have in place. And if there are additional tickets that are purchased, it also governs that as well. What I'll do is turn it over to our Community and Economic Development Director, Ms. Kristine Mackey, to talk a little bit more about the policy and use of the suite.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilman Waring, to specifically ask your question, I think you asked, how often is it active and how often is it dark? It was the specific question I heard as we were walking up. There are approximately 130 events in the arena on an annual basis. A number of them are nonprofits, people, you know, doing events and activities for others. You have the Phoenix Suns, you have the Mercury, you have the Rattlers, and then you have concerts, and then you have Disney on Ice and events like that. So when we look at those 130 nights a year, those aren't all ones that we have access to, but we do the Suns and the Mercury and the Rattlers and most concerts that are there. We tend to use it on an annual basis. It really ranges, but we'll use it anywhere between 40 and 50 times a year would be average. Over the pandemic, of course, not many. And over the last year, as we came back up again, about 25 times.
Mayor, can somebody refresh my memory? How much money did the city put in, meaning taxpayers, put into the stadium?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, the city on the initial construction partnered with Mr. Colangelo to build the stadium. Development agreement was from 1989. Most recently, the renovation of the stadium, the city funded $150 million of the rep, of the $240 million of the renovation.
It's an expensive box, for one that sits empty more than half the time. Or at least, we don't get to use it half the time, more than half the time. Okay, I don't know that this is going to change anything. I would love to have an item where we approach the new Suns owner, I've never met, I don't know if any of you guys have, and say, are you interested in taking over the operations of the stadium? That certainly happened with other stadiums. I will also point out, for those who think we're short of government funds, we are that rare city. We now have three basketball stadiums, because we have this one. ASU has a basketball stadium. You've still got the one sitting over on McDowell. ASU didn't want to work with the NFL team, or vice versa, or whatever, so we had to build two football stadiums. And then ASU had to refurbish their stadium after this other one was built. Seems like maybe they could have worked together on that site, but they didn't want to do that. We're now going to have three hockey stadiums. That's got to be some kind of record somewhere. You've got the one sitting empty in Glendale. You're going to have the one built in Tempe, and you've got ASU having one. That's, that's a lot of stadiums. And they're getting more expensive by the day. If we could divest ourselves of one, that would make me happy. And then we wouldn't even be having this discussion. There wouldn't be a box to be discussing. People would be buying their tickets themselves, whatever. So I, I just, that's what I'd like to see this discussion go. At the moment, I'll second Doug, excuse me, Deb's motion, but it just seems like the simpler linear thing was, the thing has been redone, refurbished. It's brand new. For these teams, these leases and the revenue streams, if you ever follow it, and you should, since we own one, that's, that's a big deal. And that drove up the price of this team, undoubtedly. They can probably put a number on it. Might have increased its value, I don't know, $1 billion or something. There's only a few teams out there that you can buy. So I just think the time might be now to have that discussion. And I think it would behoove us to do so, and then we won't have any more of this. So, thank you.
Mayor?
I think Councilman DeCiccio, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So to Jim's point, one, if I remember correctly, the policy that we put in place back in the 90s, I was involved in it. So it was meant to promote transparency, which I believe it did. So it followed the policy that we created back then. Now we're looking at new policies. And I think that, you know, as life goes on, you should always make changes, too. My preference would be just to, A, either sell it, which I think you just get a one-time deal on it, but I'd rather lease it out every year. Why not? We make a lot more money that way. And then if we have to, we can put into the agreement, because an agreement is nothing more than just a piece of paper. That's all it is. Whatever you put on the back, this is, whatever is legal, is what you end up doing. So we can always put in language, once we lease it out, that says that we will get it at certain times, but we have to reserve it two or three weeks in advance, so that if we do have somebody, like, you know, and we do use it for these things. And if you want to bring people in and show them off our city, what better place to do that than with the Phoenix Suns? Now, they've got Kevin Durant. I mean, he's an exciting player, and the players themselves are exciting, too, and people want to see that. They want to be able to see that. They want to see that we have an opera. They want to see that we have the symphony. People want to see and make sure that we are a well-rounded community. So from my end, my preference would be just to lease this thing out and then work it out that way. I think we'd make money that way, and we get past a lot of this that we're, it comes up every few years. Last time this came up was probably 15 years ago. On the point of the Phoenix Suns deal that was struck, and this is critical to understand to Jim's point here, was that if you look at the 1989 deal that was put together by Jerry Colangelo at the time, the Suns put in the majority of the money and they got, no, I'm sorry. The city put in the majority of the money at the time. No, I'm sorry, the Suns put in the majority of the money at the time, and the Suns got back in return the majority of the money. The city of Phoenix didn't. And if you look at that, that ended up being a pretty good deal for the city of Phoenix taxpayer, a really good deal long-term. The deal that was struck, and that, why it's problematic, and why the Suns made so much money on that deal, was that the majority of money that came in was from the taxpayer, and the least amount of money was put in by the Suns, this is the most recent one, and in return, the Suns received the majority of the money. It was completely turned around. And if you look at it just on an economic basis, I estimated that that one agreement that was done was basically an add of $300 million to $500 million in one day into the actual asset value of the Phoenix Suns. $300 million out of our taxpayer monies, because the majority of revenues went over to the Suns at the time. Well, good for them for putting it together. I didn't agree with it, and I think Jim didn't either. But that's a huge difference there, if you look at it just economically. So from my preference, to the maker of the motion, if they'd be willing just to lease this thing out, I think we'd be much better off doing that. Financially, it's better for the city. And if you're looking for transparency, they can't get a model more transparent than that, because then we can reserve in advance why we want to use that box. And we'd be better off. I don't begrudge anybody that would have used it or not, because that was the policy in place. And things, you know, things happen, and I just don't. I mean, I just think it becomes political after a while. And I'm not, I don't think we ought to be throwing political stones at people for doing what was already a policy that was in place. But it's okay to change it now. It's better, it's good to take another look at it right now and to figure out a better way to do this. And I still think that the leases, and if people look back at my comments back in the 1990s, they're very similar as to what they are today. Back then, I promoted the same thing, said, let's just lease this thing out. So that's where I would be right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to the Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you. Chris and Ginger, I just have some questions. First, I just want to clarify a couple of facts. So can you just tell us who owns the suite?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the city owns the entire arena. When the agreement was written, the Suns act as the operation operator and maintenance of the facility. The city received the suite as part of the development agreement. Doesn't have a financial value to the suite. We don't have the ability to sell it. We do receive 12 tickets at no cost as part of the 1989 development agreement and utilize those tickets. So if we were to give it back, it would go back into the Suns inventory, and they would lease it or sell it to someone else.
Okay, great. So in that case, am I right to understand that there are no taxpayer So in that case, am I right to understand that there are no taxpayer dollars used for the suite in particular?
Vice Mayor, for the benefit of the suite and the utilization that economic development does to the suite, that is correct. For the suite use, not for the construction of the facility originally, but for the suite use, no, there are not. It's all private dollars.
Of course. Obviously, the City Council, before many of us were here, chose to invest in the arena, but the suite in particular. I just want to clarify, because I know there's misunderstandings about taxpayer dollars being used to utilize the suites. So what would happen if the city decided not to use the suite any longer?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it would go back into the Suns' inventory, and they would find another, someone to lease the suite.
So we would not make any money by giving it back to them?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no, we would not. Our, it's the way our agreement is written from 1989.
And who developed the policy for suite usage?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I did. Our department, my department, with legal advice did.
Okay, and again, Ginger mentioned this, but to clarify again, it is within policy for elected officials to utilize the suite?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct. It is formally stated in the administrative regulation that elected officials can use the suite.
Perfect. I just wanted to get those facts correct. I think that's important for the public to understand that this was within policy and that taxpayer dollars were not used. Now I want to hear from your perspective, Chris, when it comes to economic development. You mentioned the suite is used about 30 to 40 times per year. What are the benefits of having a council member present when you are trying to do work when it comes to economic development?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, economic development does utilize the suite, and I, my professional opinion is it's a tremendous benefit for our recruitment activities. We, you know, we talk to a lot of people, and often I'll hear from people, you know, we're trying to recruit, and they'll say, I know everything I need to know about Phoenix. And I'll say, oh, that's great. What do you, when were you in Phoenix, and what do you know about Phoenix? They'll say, I was there in 1993. I golfed at the Biltmore. I know all I need to know. It's like, you know, if you've not been to Phoenix in the last five years, you've not been to Phoenix. And the way that we've leveraged the revitalization of the entire central city is getting individuals who've been naysayers to see it when it's all lit up, when it's very active, when it's very forward-thinking. We've seen, you know, we've seen 10 million square feet of new development come in the last eight years in downtown Phoenix. And if you look at the individuals who end up building buildings, a number of them were there, we hosted them, they got to see downtown at a different scheme than at nighttime when it was dark and quiet. To your direct question of how the council members benefit, I'm the chief cheerleader for Phoenix. That's my job. That's what you all pay me, is to recruit companies into Phoenix. Our companies truly appreciate the time that they get to spend with council, to be able to understand from the council what's important to them, to feel welcome from the individuals who are put in place by our citizens. It's a different conversation that you all have with them than we do. We provide facts and figures, and we, I sell, you know, as you all like to say, I'll sell anything that's not nailed down. That's my job. But when they hear from you, the appreciation that you have for them coming, it goes miles in helping our recruitment efforts.
Okay, and then can you also elaborate? I think this entire discussion has made me think much more broadly about the various economic development strategies and initiatives that you have to attract companies, to bring business to Arizona. And I think if we're going to have a conversation about where, you know, the usage of taxpayer dollars and when elected officials are allowed to go, then we should look at everything, whether it's conferences, events, trips. There are so many different things. This is one very small piece. So can you kind of elaborate in the variety of ways that elected officials are involved in economic development for the city of Phoenix?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thanks for the clarification. I was not quite sure where you were going, so I appreciate that. City Council does an incredible job for us in highlighting Phoenix and making Phoenix, we compete on a global level, and you attend with us, whether it's lunches, or dinners, or conferences, or trade delegations. You do trade missions with us. You travel with us in our Phoenix sister cities. You are with us, as I tell everybody, you're our secret weapon in being able to really showcase Phoenix in a different light to individuals than staff can themselves. So you participate with us in a robust way in different functions and events that we have.
And Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and sorry, and Subcommittee, excuse me, council members, I'd like to add to also what Director Mackey just stated. So that question that you asked, Councilwoman Laura Pastor, as Chair of the Economic Development and Economics Subcommittee, also asked that we come and give a presentation on the suite policy and talk about those other initiatives as well. So that's something that is on that Subcommittee for a larger discussion on February 15th, excuse me, on February 22nd. So just wanted to add that to the discussion as well.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris. I think that was the most important for me to understand, that it's beneficial to you and that, you know, you know, for me personally, I believe we need to implement policies that build trust with the community. That's number one priority. I don't think any of us have a preference about doing any of these things. We want to do what's beneficial for our districts and for the city of Phoenix. In the case of the time that I used the Suns' suite, Arizona Fresh executives were there. Several months later, they made a major investment in South Phoenix, and the last time I ran into them, they brought up how welcoming the city of Phoenix has been to them and all of these different ways that we have worked to bring them here. And so I'm looking forward to that discussion in economic development, because I think if we want to be transparent, we have to do it in all of the different ways. I find it concerning that this particular conversation frankly is happening the days that, the day that ballots are dropping in one of the other districts, and I think that it's political. So I do think we need to be honest about that and really have a true conversation about transparency. Thank you.
Mayor?
I said, Councilwoman Gordato, and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Footprint Arena is a city-owned facility, and it has been since long before I came into council in 2019. We've had many conversations about the facility, but I have treated the arena in the same way I have treated all city-owned facilities, as a place to continue my effort to bring opportunities to the residents of my district, whether that be through creating strategic partnerships or economic development. This past weekend, the city of Phoenix was on the global stage with the Super Bowl. There were numerous events at city-owned facilities that the mayor and council members were invited to and attended, from concerts at Hans Park to the Super Bowl Experience at the Phoenix Convention Center, which, by the way, my kids were able to enjoy. On Saturday night, council members and the mayor were invited to a VIP event, a private concert with Gwen Stefani at the city-owned convention center. I know there's a lot of people in the council and the mayor who attended and others didn't. So I would like to ask the question, what is the difference between council members bringing groups and community partners to a city-owned facility like the Footprint Center Arena, and the mayor and council members attending the events that took place this weekend that were not open to the public? Another question, in other comments, I would like to understand the difference between bringing community partners to a city-owned facility like the Footprint Arena, and council members and the mayor traveling to meet the companies like TSMC in Taiwan? What is the difference between council members and the mayor traveling to any number of countries across the globe to meet with companies and community organizations to convince them of the value of coming to Phoenix? We have an entire office in our Community and Economic Development Department dedicated to creating ties with other regions across the world to attract business and cultural exchange to Phoenix. Council members and the mayor regularly attend these trips. I believe there is a trip being planned for this summer to Southeast Asia countries, which mayor and other council members have planned to attend. I understand that in an election year, these sorts of items will be brought up and pushed by those with transparently political motives, but I know that the great majority of residents in District 5 see and appreciate how hard my team and I work to strategically use every opportunity and venue possible to bring investment to our community. For example, in my district, I continue to work closely with the Milwaukee Brewers, who are based out of a city-owned facility at 51st Avenue in Maryvale. My team and I coordinated numerous events with them at the ballpark. We have hosted everything from backpack drives and food banks to vaccinations efforts and holiday events. I would say that in that facility, we have distributed thousands of backpacks to children that don't have the means to be able to buy one. This past December, we gave out 500 toys to kids at our very merry Maryvale event. I have also worked in partnership with a local radio station to bring baseball teams up from Mexico to play exhibition games at our shared facility as part of our effort to create spaces of community celebration and family-friendly activities in District 5 that were very needed, especially after this pandemic. I am extremely grateful to the partnership my office has built with the Brewers, and together we have collaborated to put a city-owned facility to work for our community. I, for one, trust Chris Mackey and her ability to ensure the different opportunities we have entrusted to her team. She is always strategic, and she has been a master at attracting and retaining businesses in the city of Phoenix. Would like to thank you for all of the hard work, Chris, that you have done and all the great ideas that you have brought to our city, but also into District 5. And I know we have many plans with the Brewers, given the partnerships that we've been able to build with them. Now they are bringing in their owners, and we have so many more plans for the Brewers' facility out in Maryvale. Excited to put that plan together. But however, I would ask that if this council would like to address council members and the mayor's use of city-owned facilities, I would encourage us to be consistent in our approach and include an examination of council member and mayor's use of all economic development opportunities, from travel abroad to reporting of what events council members and the mayor attend in their capacity as elected officials, as we did based on already existing policy when we attended the Footprint Center. We should promote always transparency at every opportunity. And like some of my colleagues already said, this should not just be done when there is a, when it's politically convenient. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Gordato. You took a lot of words out of my mouth. I think when we came on into council, we were following the mayor's and previous councils' lead on trying to use every resource and vehicle to make sure we showcase our city. I used the footprint suite, and I'm proud to say that in similar fashion, we brought over $200 million investment to my district, to District 8, with the Arizona Fresh Project. I happen to be a Spanish speaker, and a lot of those investors came from Mexico and other places, so I believe I played a crucial role, not only in making sure that we had a need in the district, but to make sure that those folks felt comfortable that the city of Phoenix wanted to work with them. I think for, you know, this is obviously a political stone, and I think unfortunately our staff gets caught in between this. We had a similar situation with park security months ago. And I want to tell Chris, I trust you completely. I don't think we should create more barriers for yourself. And I also want to also make clear that not one extra cent was spent for us to go the times that we went. But yet, like some of my colleagues have said, you know, some council people may not have used the suite, but they've also requested it for other companies, whether it's Mayo or others, to show up, even if they weren't showing up. Or, but we constantly spend money on conferences, luncheons, events. Councilwoman Stark, the maker of this motion, got to travel on taxpayer money to Asia and decided to stay an extra week in Asia. Again, if it made TSMC or it made other things happen, that's great. But I do think if we're going to have a conversation and have these political stones be thrown, that we look thoroughly at what happens. I can point to what happened from the visits that I went to the Footprint Center. Can the mayor speak to what the Gwen Stefani concert brought to the city, or hanging out with the Bidwells and Gwen Stefani on Saturday, what that brought to the city? And again, I haven't asked that question, but I think that's the lens that we have to look this, look at this. And again, finally, I wouldn't be supporting this, because it would mean that we're giving a resource away that we are not currently paid for. I agree with Jim. We made the expense a long time ago, and folks on this council decided to make Robert Sarver a billionaire. I don't know what it would have been sold for if we wouldn't have made that investment, but I do know that we made that, that, that much more expensive. And so I am sorry, Chris, you're being put through this, that you're being embarrassed in this, or I don't know if you're being embarrassed, but to me, it's embarrassing that we are questioning your judgment and your great ability to continue to produce for our city. And so I wouldn't support the motion that's being made, and would appreciate if we continue to trust Chris to do her job.
Councilman DeCecio, followed by Councilman Waring.
Mayor, I'm going to make a substitute motion to lease it out and send it to the EDE Committee for the policy for that. And then you can do carve-outs and do all that stuff that you want to do from that. So either that or it goes to Jeff, whichever way. But leasing it out solves everything. It ends this discussion. It started back in the 90s. And at the end of the day, by leasing it out, Chris, you can make determinations as to who you want to see in the box. And I would have to agree to some level, you want to see an elected official at times, be able to shepherd people in. They want to see, they want to hear from policymakers. I know it sounds bad, but it is true. Business people want to hear from policymakers where they make the determination of whether or not they like what the policymakers are saying, they agree with, and then they make those investments in our community. So there are times, you've got to have policymakers do that. I'm not big on ribbon-cutting myself, but you go to those things because people want to see that you support their operations. So from my end of it, I'm making a substitute motion to lease out the box and then have it go to, I guess, Laura's committee in order to make the determination as to what those policies are. That's my motion.
We'll go to Councilman Waring, and then Councilwoman O'Brien has not had a chance to speak yet. I'll go to her, and then we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
So it's me, Mayor? Am I next, or did you say Councilman O'Brien? Councilman O'Brien?
I guess, do you mind if Councilman O'Brien?
No, that's okay. She hasn't spoken, yeah, that's fine.
I had called on Waring when I called on DeCecio, but...
I know, but she hadn't spoken.
You hadn't raised your hand yet.
I have a question, I think that would be for Julie. Is Councilman DeCecio's substitute motion, is that allowable under the topic, given the topic that we're having? Sorry.
Well, Mayor and Council, and I'm not sure if I heard a second on that motion, but to address that, it could possibly go under other direction to staff related to the arena suite policy, but I would also caution that I am not sure that we can contractually do that, so we would have to look at that possibility. So we would have to amend, you know, this is a direction related to amending the suite policy, and then we would, certainly direction to staff, we would need to look at some of those other possibilities.
Sorry, Councilman DeCecio, could you repeat it so that I make sure I understand?
The, thank you for the, the substitute motion is to lease out the box and find out if we can legally do this contractually to do that, lease it out, and then send it to the Subcommittee that would be overseeing this for policy changes. It's this really simple thing. It solves this right here and allows us to vet it out, and if we can lease it out, we do. If we don't, you come back to us.
So just for clarification, that you want staff to make, to find out if we could lease it out?
Yeah.
And send the discussion regarding the suite use to EDE as it's already on the agenda for next week?
That's where it should go anyways, yeah. So it becomes a public airing of a discussion. And I will be hard-pressed to support anything if it doesn't increase, if it does not include a lease provision in there to lease it out the box, because then you can put in place policies as to who's there, who's not there. We did something similar to this in the 90s when we created this policy.
Yes, thank you so much for that clarification, Councilman.
So we'll go Councilman Waring, and then the Vice Mayor, and then Councilwoman Pastor, unless Councilwoman Pastor wants to get her first chance.
Yes, it's fair.
All right, so Waring, Vice Mayor, Pastor.
First of all, I should have said this before, I'm not criticizing anybody for, that's not, that's not my thing. I didn't know the ballots were coming out today. That's not my, this isn't my thing. But what is my thing is, I didn't think we should have done this, again, when most of you weren't on the council, so this isn't, you know, again, this isn't really directed at you at all. I did think this was an opportunity to maybe revisit that issue, because we just happened to have a new owner as well. We should at least meet him. He's a business partner of ours, effectively, a pretty big one, and see what the appetite might be for doing something different than we've done it before, because a sal that said, I mean, and nothing against Robert Sarver, but... said, I mean, and nothing against Robert Sarver, but we made him a ton of money. That's the one actual economic development thing that for sure happened, is he's a lot richer than he would have been if we hadn't have done this deal. And all due respect, because again, it's not the people sitting at the table, basically, who negotiated this deal either. They're all new too. It's now four years on, a lot of things have changed in the city. Yeah, four years on. But Robert Sarver's a very smart guy and I can just tell you, it put him in a room with, we don't manage stadiums really for a living and stuff. He's going to win that matchup every time. It'd be like having me fight Mike Tyson. I'm going to lose and probably look stupid and get killed doing it. So not surprisingly, he came out with a great deal. But at this point, it might be nice to cut our losses. We don't get a lot out of this, frankly, other than, you know, maybe some restaurants get built around the stadium and so forth. Please remember, three short years ago, people weren't going to Suns games. I kept hearing from people that they couldn't give their tickets away. Sports are a very tricky business. And as a kid who grew up in Chicago, I can tell you, your teams don't always win. In fact, a lot of times they lose. Every team I root for right now is wretched, except the Suns. And a couple of weeks ago, that didn't look so promising either. Now things have changed completely, but it's a very tricky business. And the idea that the stadium's going to be packed and people are going to be flocking downtown and everything for in perpetuity, that's kind of silly too, if you look at the history of that business as a whole. So I would just respectfully say, at least let's have the new fella in, talk to him, see if there's a way to maybe get out of this. There are other places Chris can take clients. Again, I'm not criticizing anybody who's going out and doing whatever. That's not my role in this. You do whatever you need to do. Chris, we want you to be successful. Obviously, we've had stuff come to District Two and we're pretty proud of that up there. But in terms of what we can and can't do with this lease, I just, again, I'm fascinated by this because we put in most of the money. I mean, I don't even know what to say to that. That is just kind of bizarre to me. So it would be nice if we could say, with all respect, if we want to lease it out, you know, that's what we're going to do. We did just solid by giving you $150 million that frankly, we could have spent on parks or more police or firefighters. All that was talked about at the time. I think the revenue stream is like $20 million a year in perpetuity, stadium or no, correct? And that's, I guess, a question for Jeff or Lori or somebody. At least that's what it was when we were doing this a few years ago.
Councilman, could you repeat your question, please?
So the revenue stream that pays for the stadium, that was about $20 million a year, if memory serves. Now, that's a memory from four years ago. Is that still about what it is?
It's probably gone up from there. I don't have the exact number, Chris. I don't know if you have the sports facilities forecast off the top of your head.
I don't have it right off the...
It's probably gone up. I mean, that's years ago, inflation and everything else, it's likely bringing in more revenue. And like you said, the Suns have been successful and there've been a lot of more hotel bookings and all of those things play a part of that revenue stream.
But when they did, we did this, I vote against it, but when this happened, they were dreadful and the stadium was empty a lot of the time, including probably the suite. I just, I wish we could revisit this. Maybe we can't. I definitely think, I don't want to give the, I'm not stupid, I don't want to give the suite back to the Suns for nothing. That doesn't make any sense. Leasing it out makes a lot of sense. To hear that, oh, I don't know if we could even do that, that doesn't seem right to me. So at some point, we've got to take back a little bit of control of this relationship because it's gotten just way out of hand. And I mentioned all those other stadiums to show just how out of hand it's gotten. We're not doing these teams a favor by having them in the facilities. I mean, we're doing them a favor. They're not doing us a favor by playing there in the subsidized stadium. So there's got to be a little more balance with the taxpayer because I just, I saw this deal and I just thought, it was just, it was clearly a recipe for making Robert Sarver money when he sold the team. That's, and I don't blame him for that. He's a smart guy. But I just, now here we are, having this discussion. It's not surprising to me and I wish we could revisit this in a more meaningful way than just talking about one suite in a multi-hundred-million-dollar facility. We don't have, as a city, a lot of multi-hundred-million-dollar facilities, except water in the airport. So that's my piece. But again, it's nothing against anybody who did anything with the box. I don't really, that's not my thing. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. So since I didn't hear a second, I have a secondary motion. Maybe you'll be willing to accept it.
I think we cannot, well, can we turn to either our city clerk or city attorney for council rules?
Yes, Mayor and Council, since we have a motion on the table, unless that has died, if there is, I think you need to check to see if there's a second before we make another motion.
Can I give a suggestion to the maker of the motion? Yes. Okay. Just given the conversation, I was thinking we could do a secondary motion to continue this conversation and look at all policies under community and economic development and have them come back with recommendations. So not a more holistic approach based on what was said today.
I would take that, but with one condition on my end only, is that if there isn't a lease provision moving forward, going forward on this thing, I wouldn't support it. So I would be supportive of most, anything that you want to do on something like that, as long as there's a lease provision, because then you can control it. You actually have a lot more control when you structure an agreement of how it's going to be handled. I mean, I trust Chris Mackey. I don't think you're stuck in the middle of this. I mean, it's just, you know, you're just part of what is happening right now. You're amazing, actually. You and Ginger, I love watching Ginger up there. She's incredible. But yeah, I'd be happy to do that if you'd second it. But from my end, I have to see a lease provision in there. Other than that, you can write however you want.
Can you add the EDE?
Yeah, sure.
It's going to the Subcommittee next Wednesday?
I always do what you tell me.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Just kidding, I don't. We butt heads more than anybody up here. But yeah, if you want to do that, let's do that. Okay, I'm good.
Can we have clarity on the motion?
Well, Yasmin, you want to just go ahead? Just say it. Cheers.
Okay. We're going to move to continue the item and have CED evaluate all economic development initiatives that we use to attract business to the city and make recommendations on policy at the next Economic Development and Equity Subcommittee meeting.
Yep.
Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification, so the maker of the motion would be Councilman DeCecio and seconding is Vice Mayor? Okay.
And just so I understand, so what you are hoping to do is have a much broader conversation on Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But we don't have to, like, share the secret sauce of everything Chris does?
Well, I don't know.
You have to take me out and kill me to do that.
Okay. I mean, part of it is our people that sell Phoenix and that is hard to replicate, but...
And also for clarification, Mayor, if I may, this is then being referred to basically the Subcommittee. Is that correct? We're continuing to that Subcommittee meeting? Okay, thank you.
So it's basically a motion to refer economic development, including the arena, but the conversation can be?
All of the...
All-inclusive? Okay.
And the citizens' petition? Or what's in there? Did we, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ensure, because we did just slightly broaden the scope of the topic, that Mrs. Mackey would have the appropriate amount of time because Wednesday is one week from today. And so I just want to ensure that she feels comfortable presenting then, but on that broader topic.
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, Councilwoman Pastor had asked for a broader discussion at her Subcommittee back in January, and so we had been preparing for that conversation for some time. Now with the direction from the council and the expanding of that conversation, we'll be ready.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Vice Mayor, okay, so, does Councilman DeCecio still have the floor or you're good?
I've been good for a while. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So then I think we're now to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes. So it's been a lively discussion. Since this whole time this article dropped and for whatever reason, it is what it is, I do think it's political. And if we look at all the connections and how it is, however, I think it's timely to have this bigger and broader conversation as to what economic development looks like in the city of Phoenix and who participates in the economic development in the city of Phoenix. I think it's our responsibility as elected officials to attract businesses, to bring them to our city and demonstrate and show what our city's all about. I was one that used the suite and I was one that was also a bilingual speaker and was able to talk to companies that wanted to expand to Phoenix, and they did. Last night, I happened to be at one of the restaurants that I wanted to support, who I spoke with in the suite. And the owners and I became conversational and I went to visit the restaurants and we sat and we talked and we talked about expansion. Where do you want to go? Some people, they were talking Glendale. I said, no, let's go Phoenix. And so those dialogues do happen amongst people wanting to come to Phoenix. The other time I was there, and I think I'm 50 to 50 for what I did, I was with the venture capitals, a bunch of venture capital people who happened to be doing some cancer research, who then became, because of the research, is a Nobel Prize awardee, is from Scripps and Mayo and is here today. I was part of the bioscience conversation and I don't think there is anything wrong in having those conversations and being in that space because I attracted economic development. The bottom line is, is as elected officials, we are, our job is to sell. Our job is to build community, to build vibrancy, and our job is also to solve problems with our constituents. As you saw earlier, I had a big case on zoning. That's bringing people to Phoenix. That's moving people on the light rail corridor that we want to be utilized. That's moving people to downtown to sporting events. If we weren't vibrant, the Super Bowl wouldn't have been here. We're not investing in our city, the Super Bowl wouldn't have been here. The Final Four is not going to be here. So I find this conversation, I think it's broader in conversation of looking at policy and seeing what it is and what as a council we want to do, but it would be silly for us as elected officials to tie our hands and not recruit economic development. And so I have asked since December for this to be in my Subcommittee. It was supposed to be in January. For whatever reason, it wasn't placed on the Council and then it is now placed in February. And we will have this broader conversation. But appreciate everybody that has brought it to our attention because now we will have look at all our economic tools that everybody uses in order to attract business. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments, I think we are ready for a roll call on Councilman DeCecio's motion created with assistance from the Vice Mayor. And everyone clear on, all right, roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
All right. That is our final agendized item. We now move to public comment and I'll turn to our city attorney to introduce that portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the City Council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the City Council to listen to the comments but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes.
Thank you. We'll begin with Tamika Brown, followed by Rosario.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tamika Brown and I am a General Utility Worker Lead for Aramark at the Phoenix Convention Center. I have worked there for approximately over five years. We will hear from unemployed workers united who are fighting for housing justice. If the city's subcontract companies pay their employees enough to live on, I would not have been homeless. If Aramark actually paid its workers a living wage, I wouldn't have been homeless, sorry. I wouldn't have to move twice within this last year. I deserve to be able to afford housing, but currently I cannot do that. I currently make $16.50 an hour and I don't work enough hours to qualify for health insurance, like most of my coworkers. Only two people out of 59 people actually have health insurance coverage. Why is that okay? It's a shame that the city of Phoenix allowed its contractor, Aramark, to treat its workers this way. Aramark is a contractor with the city of Phoenix. So why is it okay for a city contractor to treat their workers that way? Look into Aramark's contract, push them to do better, to pay their workers a living wage and to treat their workers with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Rosario is next, followed by Magali.
Alcalde y Ayuntamiento, mi nombre es Rosario Lechuga. Soy servidor de banquetes para Aramar en Phoenix Convention Center.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rosario Lechuga. I am a banquet server for Aramark at the Phoenix Convention Center.
He trabajado ahí por cinco años y gano 16.40 la hora que no incluye propina.
I have worked there for five years and I make $16.40 an hour, which does not include gratuity.
El fin de semana pasado, muchos de mis compañeros de trabajo trabajaron turnos de más de 12 horas el fin de semana pasado en NFL.
This past weekend, many of my coworkers worked 12-plus-hour-long shifts for the NFL.
Aramar usa trabajadores temporales de afuera para trabajar en el evento.
Aramark brought in outside temporary workers to work the event.
Los trabajadores temporales ganan el doble muchas veces más que nosotros que trabajamos para Aramar.
But some of these temporary workers were making double what we make.
¿Por qué se les permite Aramar traer trabajadores externos y pagarles mucho más que a nosotros que trabajamos para Aramar?
Why is Aramark allowed to bring in outside workers and pay some of them twice as much as their own workers?
Que sus propios trabajadores. Les pregunto a ustedes, ¿no merecemos ganar el mismo dinero que los trabajadores temporales?
So I ask all of you, don't we deserve to earn that much money what the temporary workers are making?
No, no trabajo mis 40 horas semanales y quiero hacerlo. Tengo 56 compañeros de trabajo y solo trabajan cuatro de tiempo completo. Cuatro trabajan de tiempo completo únicamente.
I don't work my full 40 hours a week, even though I want to. I have 56 coworkers and only four work full-time.
Solo tienen seguro médico dos trabajadores.
And out of those four, only two have health insurance.
Solo dos trabajadores tienen seguro médico en Aramar Convention Center.
Only two Aramark workers at the Phoenix Convention Center have health insurance.
Lástima de Phoenix por permitir que su contratista Aramar trate a los trabajadores de esta manera.
Shame on Phoenix for allowing their contractor, Aramark, to treat workers like this.
Quiero un seguro médico... Quiero un seguro médico, quiero poder pagarme alquiler, quiero trabajar para Aramar. Necesita, necesita, Aramar necesita hacerlo mejor.
I want health insurance. I want to be able to afford my rent. I want to work, and Aramark needs to do better.
Le insisto que analice el contrato de Aramar y le presione para que traten a sus trabajadores con dignidad y respeto. Gracias.
I urge you to look into Aramark's contract and push them to treat their workers with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Maggie Martinez-Sines next, followed by Ken Waters.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Magaly Martinez-Sines. I'm here as a Phoenix resident and with Unemployed Workers United. I am a First Nation Mexican-American born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona. I've had the privilege of growing tres luchas café with my partner. As a small business owner, my income is not guaranteed, especially during a looming recession. Many of my own extended family members are a paycheck or two away from being, from having housing insecurity. Councilmember Ansari, this past Sunday, you acknowledged and addressed a comment of mine on Instagram stating, and I'm paraphrasing, "The City Council is prioritizing source-of-income discrimination, but was waiting for the law department to finish working on language for the ordinance." We ask that you continue to show leadership on this bill, not only for the constituents in your district, but for all constituents in the city of Phoenix. Actions speak louder than words. We understand, once larger cities take protective measures, many others follow suit. While you all sit comfortably in this chamber, there are many sitting on dirt and concrete easements just miles away with housing vouchers in hand. It's important that we recognize the privilege of time. Every day we wait, more lives are claimed by the harsh winters and unforgiving Phoenix summers. Death is knocking. We should not wait to do what is right by the residents of our city. We need to act ahead and be proactive about expanding tenant protections. I am very disappointed at the lack of initiative on this issue out of fear of failure or fear of optics. If nothing was ever fought for out of fear of reduction, we still wouldn't be allowed to vote, let alone run for office as minority women. Radical problems require radical solutions. If we can talk about the Phoenix Suns, we can talk about tenant protections. Put SOI on the agenda now. Thank you.
Ken is next, followed by Lucy Willis.
Councilmembers, maybe make a suggestion that you maybe allocate fifteen, twenty minutes of public comment before the council meeting, because some of these council meetings can go a long, long time. And to make them wait, I didn't, this was right after the, I only signed up because it was right after '71. I thought I'd be speaking really quick. So anyways, to just allocate maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, and then those that don't get in that window, go at the end, because I've been at council meeting and spent, lasted eight hours, omnipotent, 2015. We had to wait around eight hours before our item got up, and then to give public comment afterwards. I didn't want to waste all my time on that. Anyways, I want to circle back. Laura Pastor, Councilwoman, your comments about being proud to put an apartment-only complex on the TOD where 99.99% of the people are going to walk to the back of their car, the parking lot, and go out and drive, urban walkability, the goal, is for them to get out and start walking the sidewalks there. They're not, they're not going to be using it. It's ironic that, I'm talking about the TOD, I wasn't in favor of it originally, but now that we're here, it can be a huge, huge, huge opportunity. And Las Vegas was just, you know, giving you kudos that it's brought seven billion. I don't know where that number came from. I guess it's true, but seven billion dollars in economic development along the TOD. So I thought that last item, which I think was much ado about nothing, and I support that you guys continue to use the facilities there. I think it looked like it was political, so I was actually going to say, hey, I support the council in using it. So anyways, but a whole lot of time was spent on that suite, and then when we talk about TOD, that Las Vegas is bragging that Phoenix has seven billion dollars in economic development along the TOD, and there wasn't a whole lot of conversation going on that, but when we start talking about a suite that maybe, you know, you guys have privy to, there's a whole lot of discussion. I think, I would have liked to see a lot more discussion by the City Council on the TOD, because I don't think, there's an echo chamber in the city of Phoenix on this topic, and I would like to, if I could, maybe call into the city manager's office tomorrow and see if we can break this echo chamber and maybe talk about some other things that should be brought up on the TOD, because right now, in Uptown and Midtown, it's not happening. Single use is the antithesis of what's needed there. So anyways, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Lucy, if she's, okay. Beatrice Johnson, followed by Luis Herrera.
Good afternoon to the Mayor and City Council. My name is Beatrice X. Keaton Johnson, and I am the baby sister and the next of kin and a spokesperson for the family of Dorothy Jean Dell Chambers, who was killed by vehicular homicide on April 26, 2022, while in a cross mark and just steps away from the sidewalk when Nabaska Pekovic, a Scottsdale business owner, killed my sister and her companion, Joseph Gutierrez, who were unsheltered at the time of their death and resided in Perry Park. All the witnesses reported that Pekovic was speeding, also a report that he was driving reckless, wiggling in and out of traffic. A witness also said that if he was not speeding, he would have saw them. The black box reported he was going 50 to 60 miles per hour, five seconds before he killed them. Pekovic failed the physical part of the sobriety test, and he had blew a 0.31. The Phoenix officer who gave him the test 30 minutes after he killed my sister said he showed signs of impairment. The Phoenix police did not give him a blood test. One hour and 15 minutes later came another officer who gave him a eye test and let him go. We believe the police is doing all it can to protect the driver, Nabaska Pekovic. Police Detective Taryn Campbell never notified our family. My sister lay in a morgue for eight days, and if we had not went and cared for her every week to check on her, we would not know that my sister was dead. The Phoenix police never, ever notified our family. We only learned because we wear a fair check her every week. We are devastated of the fact that we are equally, the same officer who never notified our family, Detective Taryn Campbell, is the same officer who had the ability to say what charges that he would get. And for 10 months, our family has been fighting the Phoenix Police Department. My sister was not killed by the Phoenix Police, but for 10 months, we have been fighting the Phoenix Police. He sat on this case. He never moved the case unless we called a police chief, unless we called a commander. I've been doing all this for 10 months so that he could get to City Council Prosecutor, and he finally got a court date on February the 7th, and he did not even show up. And he has a warrant for his arrest. We want him arrested. He killed two people, and our families should not have to go through this. And it's because my sister was unsheltered, she was not a throwaway, she was very loved, and we will never stop fighting, and we want Nabaska Pekovic arrested. And then later, we'll be back to talk about these Phoenix Police officers.
Luis is next, followed by John Forsythe.
I actually go by Bash. My name's Sebastian. My middle name's Sebastian. So I used to work at the Convention Center three years ago in 2020. I got laid off because of the pandemic. Recently, I tried to go back. I went there twice, put an application in, and I talked to the HR guy, who I've seen before. They didn't, he told me explicitly that he's not going to consider hiring me. So the reason that this is significant, and this has been brought up already by friends, coworkers, and allies here, but the Convention Center is, when I was working there in 2020, there was 125 workers, and now there's like 59 or 60, like Rosario had mentioned. So it's severely understaffed there, and when I was working there back in 2020, they were fully staffed. And when we had an event, Comic-Con, which, if you guys know about that, it's really busy, it was a lot of work. Like, I was dishwashing, and they used a lot of temp workers for that event, and when you, if you've worked in, in the food industry and you use temp workers, it's really unorganized. It's really hard, because temp workers, for one, like Rosario had mentioned, it's unfair that they get paid more than we do, and they're only used because, you know, companies can make more profit this way, and also event-based kind of companies, I mean, I guess you sort of do need it, but the heavy reliance on it causes a lot of problems with just how organized the work is and the workload. And with, with Comic-Con, it was all over the place. It was crazy. So you can imagine that when the Super Bowl happened last week, that with half the staff they had compared to three years ago, that it's going to be even more crazy. And so people were working 12-hour-plus shifts the last couple weeks. The workload is obviously really heavy, and just, it's just not fair that, like, that the workers have to deal with that. And at the, at the same time that there's a heavy workload for the workers there, the company is not trying to staff people, clearly, like they said they weren't even going to consider me until after the Super Bowl, and that, that, it's, at the same time, they're making a lot of profit. So I mean, what we're asking them, it's very simple, just make sure that they actually staff the company and make sure that they push them to actually, like, pay fair wages, look into the contract that they have with Aramark, and push them to do the right thing, especially when they need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Bash. John is next, followed by Rex.
My name is Rex Swinmore, and I'm here along with a diverse spectrum of citizens of Phoenix in support of the Source of Income Ordinance. What brought me here today is that I find it surprising that in our city, in 2023, an American citizen approved for a housing voucher can be denied by the landlord simply because of that housing voucher. And I find it unethical and morally reprehensible that a veteran, approved for a veteran housing voucher, can be told by the management office of their apartment complex that they are denied housing in that apartment complex because of the housing voucher. That's been quoted directly from an American citizen in South Phoenix. We have evidence of that. The beautiful thing is that this ordinance has agreement across the political spectrum. I know that, I think we have eight out of nine indications of support for this Source of Income Ordinance on the council, and I'm here to ask for two things. The first is unanimity and consensus. For the final remaining member of the council who has not yet indicated support, we would love to meet with you and discuss getting your support. It would be amazing to have full consensus from the city of Phoenix for what I think is an obvious legal issue. Really, it should be illegal that a landlord can deny anybody housing because of their source of income. In fact, I was surprised that this is even a debate, like, why is it legal anywhere in the country? It's not a liberal city thing or a liberal state thing. The city of Dallas, Texas, is in support of this Source of Income Ordinance. The state of Utah, the state of North Dakota, like, as red as you can get, have state ordinance for Source of Income. So on urgency, so unanimity, I'd like to ask for a meeting with the one last remaining member of the council who has not yet indicated support and have a candid conversation about that. And then on the issue of urgency, I would ask that each council member find a resident in your district who needs a housing voucher, who's been denied housing, and if you can't find one, talk to us, we'll search for them. Have one meeting, one conversation with them, and the urgency will become very clear for you. So thank you for your time.
Michelle Ashton is next, followed by Sebastian.
I'm the program manager for a domestic violence elder abuse shelter. We find housing for our clients. They're all 50 and older, men and women, and it's a confidential shelter, so their safety is of great concern. Had a client the other day apply for housing at Coulter Park Apartments with her Section Eight voucher and was denied. They told me that it was because her residency letter that we provide to all apartment complexes stating that they do not use their address was not fair housing standards, and that all of their residents are required to provide this, a mortgage letter or a lease, which I was like, well, if she has a mortgage letter, why would she be applying with you guys? So there's one story right there. And I can fill, and I'll be back to tell you guys more stories, because I have tons of them when it comes to my clients being denied housing currently for either not making enough. I have another client who applied for an apartments, a complex, 55 and older tax credit. She receives SSI and was told that she does not make enough. If you guys are familiar with SSI, at least in her case, she is not allowed to have more than $2,000 in her bank account at any time, or she will be penalized. She cannot afford any housing at all right now, none. And her time of two years is almost up in our program. So it's my understanding that you guys have the power to pass this Source of Income Ordinance. I don't understand what the issue is. If it's about worrying about violating state law, fortunately, state law is not a living, breathing person with their rights to fair housing being violated. State law is not at risk of being sexually assaulted due to the dangers of living on the streets. And urgency appears to mean something different for everyone. I've sat here for over two hours knowing right now that I have a client facing a five-day eviction, because her apartment complex and the city of Phoenix Section Eight cannot seem to resolve why she receive, she has a $4,000 balance. Certainly, though, the $2,000 sign-on bonus did get paid to the apartment complex. So we're trying to figure that out, and each moment is of urgency. Councilwoman shared with us that through investments that are able to provide children with gifts, how many of those gifts do you believe children, like those you helped, will be able to take with them? be able to take with them when they're evicted and living in their vehicles or in shelter? With all due respect, councilmembers, my clients are not fascinated with the dealings of how much was paid for, for the stadium or for this luxury box that gets to be used by councilmembers. There's, oh, sorry, time's up. I'll be back. Thank you, guys. I would like city staff to meet with, I forgot your name, Michelle, regarding some of these cases.
Sebastian is next, followed by Mitchell.
First, I want to thank Michelle for taking her time to be here. She works directly with our community who is impacted by this kind of discrimination. I also want to thank the woman that was here earlier that lost her sister. It was very courageous for her to be up here and share her story, which I'm sure is not easy. And also our friends that unite here for coming and fighting for better working conditions. I'm here on behalf of Kathy Burns. If I haven't introduced myself or you don't remember, my name is Sebastián del Portillo. I'm an organizer of Unemployed Workers United. And I'm here on behalf of a great member and elder in our community, Kathy Burns. Kathy is currently in the hospital fighting her second round with COVID. Even so, she got on the phone with me yesterday. We had a good, long conversation, and she wanted me to share, you know, what kinds of hardships she's endured because of source-of-income discrimination. Kathy has been living in the city of Phoenix all her life. She told me that she's been living on a fixed income for a couple of decades now due to a disability that she has. And after two years of waiting, she qualified for Section 8. Since then, she has had to leave two of her homes twice because both of those apartments got sold, and the new landlord was like, you know what, we don't take Section 8 here. You got to go. Right? And so the first time that she was kicked out of her home, it took her six months to find a new home. Thankfully, she did. The second time she was displaced, it took much longer. So long, in fact, that she lost her Section 8 benefit. Right? She told me she, like, literally grew physically tired of searching for a place to live. Having eight surgeries on one of her legs, walking from the parking lot to a leasing office over and over was painful. She grew tired of having to find money for application fees that did not pan out, that did not turn into anything, application fees that she couldn't afford. And she, she also shared with me how much it hurt to know that she was losing a benefit that was keeping her afloat. Now, almost all of her disability income goes to paying rent. She's paying three times the rent than she was when she was on Section 8. And in her own words, she told me, "I am not only fighting just for me because of low income or a Section 8 voucher, but for all those people that don't get anything and are living on the streets. I feel for them. We have to help the people. I cry for them. I pray for them when I eat dinner because I can feel their bellies. We have to help the people." I wish we all have the courage and heart that Kathy does. Source-of-income is something that you can do now. We need to get it on the agenda. I really don't want to sit through another 40 minutes of a sun suite when we could actually be talking about something that will help people today and keep them off the streets. Thank you.
Mitchell is next.
Hello, Phoenix City Council. It's nice to meet you. So my name's Mitchell Kramer. I am a physician assistant student here, and I am speaking in approval of affordable housing and the SOI ordinance that we've talked about. So, you know, I grew up here in Phoenix, was born and raised, and I'm going to PA school here in the Valley, and I just wanted to share my views as a healthcare worker. My patients share some of the most valuable moments of their lives with me. Like, in the clinic when they bring in their newborns with feeding problems, in the delivery room where they entrust their, the first moments of their child's life with me, or recently, when we've had to bring out the diagnosis of autism and comfort the family through that confusion and pain. But more specifically to our, our situation here in Phoenix, every summer, emergency departments have dedicated zones for our unhoused neighbors who come in with exposure, people with internal temperatures above 104, 105, who often do not make it. I pride myself in having a rapport with my patients without judgment, regardless of the path through life. It's because of this connection that I also feel responsible for their health and advocating for them in spaces where they might not have access. But that responsibility is also shared with you, the city council, the public officials making decisions that affect their lives. Their health is as much determined by my work in the clinic as it is by your policies made here in City Hall. I hope to impress upon you that we are not just talking about housing today, but about the health of people and communities. When you succeed in reducing the cost of housing, that gives my patients more money to afford medical care. When you succeed in designing policies that secure their jobs, that means that they can schedule time to see me. When you prioritize clean air in my patients' neighborhoods, you reduce the incidence and severity of asthma that then I have to treat. I ask that you help protect my patients, the people on public assistance, from discrimination by landlords so that they can afford to stay in safe homes and safe spaces, so that they can come and see me in the clinic and don't end up in the emergency room. Thank you.
Carla is next, followed by Stephanie.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Carlin Edenhall, and I'm here representing Unemployed Workers United, as well as the thousands of residents who are currently being pushed out of their homes, many of whom rely on public assistance, such as Section 8 vouchers and social security recipients. We at OO have been working alongside our community members and partner organizations to urge you to pass an anti-discrimination ordinance based on source of income, which the city has the jurisdiction and the authority to do. We cannot afford to wait. Folks like my aunt, who's a domestic worker, was given notice to vacate after living in her home for over 20 years. She unfortunately, she fortunately had family support to find somewhere new to live, but for many residents, that is not a viable option for them. Workers deserve better. The city must move to protect Phoenix's most vulnerable residents as opposed to greedy landlords who benefit from taking advantage of them. We urge you to work out whatever legal issues, whatever things that y'all need to figure out as soon as possible and get this done for the people of Phoenix. Thank you very much.
Stephanie will be our final speaker.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. So my name is Stephanie Santiago. I currently work and live in the community. I have actually seen firsthand the effects of lack of affordable housing has created amongst families and the underserved. At my work, people line up at our weekly food distributions across the valley two hours before we even start distributing food. And this is because it's either food or rent. They have to afford rent, so they got to come get the free food, right? Folks with health issues, you know, the spikes in our, in our grocery stores are not helping. Folks with health issues, our veterans are being forced out into the streets because they can no longer afford rent. They can't afford a place to stay. Or even the vouchers that are given to them, just, they're being denied across the valley. It's ridiculous. Community members that are in fixed incomes, unfortunately, are losing their homes, cannot access even a safe shelter for their families, and a lot of them are being forced to sleep out on our streets. Mental health has now become a huge factor. Substance abuse has become a way to self-medicate, and a lot of it has become due to not even having a home. This hurts me to the core. I personally have two extra people living in my home right now that can't even afford a studio apartment, working two jobs. How are we supposed to get ahead and become self-sufficient families if we don't even have a chance? The stress of encountering so many people being displaced honestly is sickening, and it's only getting worse by the lack of action by our elected officials that have had this subject. It's, let's be honest, it's only been exacerbated by COVID, right? And the lack of landlords taking emergency vouchers for families that are in need of this assistance. Y'all need to do what's right, guys, you know, enact tenant protections now to protect our communities from rising rents. Stop filling greedy landlord pockets. Start prioritizing vulnerable communities and put source-of-income on the agenda now, please.
Thank you so much. We have had our final comment. We are adjourned.